Which is the approval of an appointment of a municipal court judge. Mr. Drury, would you mind stepping to the podium so that I can introduce you? Mr. Drury, prior to moving to Port Orchard, this is Timothy Drury. Hopefully, most of you know him. Prior to moving to Port Orchard, he attended the University of Washington where he attained his law degree. I know Noah will be happy with his appointment. He's lived in our community for more than 25 years, practicing criminal law at Kitsap County for 27 years. In his 24 years with the Kitsap County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, he rose through the ranks and attained the position of Chief Deputy Prosecuting Attorney. During the last three years, Tim has been a sole practitioner, performing primarily criminal defense work. Additionally, over the past three years, Tim has served as a pro temp judge in both Port Orchard and Bremerton Municipal Courts. Tim is a member of the South Kitsap Rotary Club. He's served on the City of Port Orchard Planning Commission for more than 15 years. He's a 2003 graduate of the Leadership Kitsap Program, was previously their president, and served on the board for a number of years. He's currently the Vice President of the Olympic College Foundation, and it's my honor this evening to present Tim Drury to the Port Orchard City Council for confirmation as Port Orchard's next municipal judge. With that, Mr. Klaassen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the mayor's appointment of Tim Drury as municipal court judge.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Drury, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, no, I'm anxiously awaiting how the vote goes out.
I hope it goes well for you. So with that, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion of this matter? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Congratulations, Mr. Drury.
Thank you very much. Well, I just want to say that I appreciate the mayor for giving me this opportunity and for the city council to endorse that opportunity, and I will do my best to live up to the expectations of the council. So, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You know, it might be valuable for the community to know the process that you went through to make your appointment. I think that's valuable.
And my entire panel, no, excuse me, Mr. Kelly wasn't part of that. So, we solicited, I did, I put it out, Deb Howard, our Human Resources Director, actually put it out to the local bar, also published in a number of publications. I used, as Mr. Drury can attest to, the governor's judicial application, which is like 14 pages, and I believe was painful to fill out. It was quite lengthy. That was the process that we used for an application, that with a cover letter and a resume. We had five applicants. We interviewed two. We narrowed that field down to two, myself, Councilmember Kachardi, Jeff Yance, who's in the audience, who's the presiding judge of the Kitsap County Municipal or District Court, was on the panel, as was Claire Bradley, who's also a district court judge. And I thank them very much for their service to our community and helping us select Tim as our next judge. So, thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, moving on. Next item is just as important, I suppose, as the last 7B, is an approval of a judicial employment contract with Mr. Drury for, as our next municipal court judge. Is there a motion or any questions? Yes, Councilmember Ashby.
I move to approve an employment contract with Tim Drury for municipal court judge for a four-year term commencing January 1st, 2018, and ending December 31st, 2021.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Donlin. So, motion in a second. Any discussion of the contract before us?
I think maybe just one comment for the public is that this contract is within the budgeted amount for this biennial budget.
Overall, it is, yes. We have savings coming from not having a pro temp judge because we've added hours to this, but overall, we will be able to manage it within our budget. So, that's correct. So, other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll be voting on the approval of a judge contract for Timothy Drury as our next municipal judge for a four-year term. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Congratulations, Mr. Drury.
Thank you very much.
All right. No feeling you need to run out the door, we've got another two hours left here. So, 7C is our next item, adoption of an ordinance setting an amount of property tax to be levied for the 2018 pursuant to RCW 8455-120. Crocker.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. For the record, again, my name is Noah Crocker, Finance Director for the City of Port Orchard. On October 24th, 2017, a public hearing on revenue and sources for the current expense general fund budget was held. The hearing included a presentation and discussion on property tax considered for collection in 2018. Below is a table of the next year's levy amount compared to this year's levy amount. In the table, you'll see that 2017, we had a levy of $2,699,059. For 2018, the levy is $2,806,526. State law, RCW 8452-043 establishes maximum levy rates for various types of taxing districts. Total City of Port Orchard 2018 property tax amount is estimated to be $2,806,526, based upon an estimated maximum levy rate of 1.6922 per thousand of current total assessed value of $1,631,299,922. The 2018 amount is estimated until the final levy calculation is completed by the Kitsap County Assessor. The projected 2018 levy rate of 1.6922 calculates a tax of roughly $380,000 in state half cents on a house assessed at $225,000.
Okay. And the Finance Committee recommended approval of this resolution. I do note in the chart there, one mistake, on the right chart, it says the 2018 levy, and it totals, and it says 2016, and I believe that should say 2018.
Correct. Yeah, well.
And did this, have we updated this since the library levy passed, or is that going to be an adjustment that happens later by the Assessor?
That will be an adjustment that happens later, yes. This is the same information we brought forward under our October 24th meeting. Once the county completes its levy certification with all their taxing districts, they will finalize our levy amount. And again, as we said at that meeting, I would expect, although we are trying to levy the $2.8 million, that we will not actually receive that levy due to the library passing and what happens with the other taxing districts. So, we are estimating that our levy amount will be more in the neighborhood of $2.725 million once the certifications have been completed.
Mr. Klaassen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance setting the 2018 property tax levy and the amount of property tax to be raised for the budget year of 2018.
Second. Second by Councilmember Kachardi. Discussion of this matter? Questions? Yes, Mr. Deener.
Can you remind us the refunds that look to be 30, almost 36,000, what is that for? For the 2018 levy?
Yes, so the refunds, and I almost pulled them off on this again, but again, I wanted to keep consistent with what I showed you before. Again, for 2018, because of the impacts of the library levy, we are rate restricted, which means that although in this resolution, this ordinance here, we will have a 1.69% proposed as our maximum, you will actually see that likely go down to 1.67. And so, although I am trying to levy for these refunds, there is slim to no chance we will actually receive those refunds from the levy because we are capped at that lower rate. So, even though they're on here, we really do not have a good opportunity of actually collecting on those refunds from prior years.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
I appreciate the input. I had a question of the Finance Director today, and I asked him what was the comparison this year versus last year, and he explained to me, and it may have been obvious to you that our rate this, for 2018, is actually less than 2017, and as I think he said, the city's portion of property tax is going to be less as well. So, that was refreshing. We're used to things going up, and so for the city's portion to be less than last year is quite novel, in a sense. But I appreciate that background.
Property tax goes up, just our portion.
Our portion.
Yeah, our portion is squeezed by the other taxing districts.
Right.
The tax is actually going up, we're just getting less of it.
Our revenue will be reduced.
Right.
Yep.
Yes. Other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Be voting on the 2018 property tax levy rate. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to 7D, adoption of an ordinance approving the 2017 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Mr. Bond.
Yes, thank you. The 2017 Comprehensive Plan Amendment process is nearing its conclusion. Before you tonight is an ordinance to adopt the 2017 amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, and this has been inserted in the agenda before the budget because a couple of the text amendments contained herein have implications on the budget, and of course, RCW 3670A, and I forget the final three numbers off the top of my head, but it requires that your budget decisions be made in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan, and so that's why this item is appearing on this portion of the agenda. The amendments before you include text amendments, including an update to Appendix B of the Comprehensive Plan to reflect the updated six-year street plan, the updated capital facilities plan, and the removal of the Sydney Avenue Corridor Plan from Appendix B. It includes the adoption of the 2018 to 2023 six-year street plan, and this is a document that we update annually. It includes an update to the capital facilities element to revise Table 9.2.1 Administration and Service Facilities in the Capital Facilities Element to add the 720 Prospect Street Property to the table and to remove the 640 Bay Street Property from the table, and these are related to both the purchase of 720 Prospect and also an item on the agenda later on this evening to surplus the 640 Bay Street Property. And then finally, the Annapolis Creek Project. We realized, we had a couple of issues there. First of all, we had incorrectly titled it the Arnold Creek Property because Annapolis Creek is in the Arnold right-of-way near Annapolis, and also, it had appeared in both the stormwater and the transportation project list because we weren't sure whether this was a stormwater project or a transportation project, and we wanted to keep our options open in terms of grant funding. Now, in the budget, we're proposing to move forward with this as a stormwater project. Finally, there are the city-initiated map amendments, and this includes some revisions to approximately 236 properties, mostly to the east of Blackjack Creek and south of the Lundberg area, or just a little north of Lundberg, but these are the areas that we annexed in, within the last 10 years. We realized that when we annexed those areas, we actually downzoned them when they came into the city from what was previously allowed. We had some developments that are still entitled, that were, are currently zoned at densities less than what they're being built at because of their entitlements, and generally, we wanted to do a better job of protecting Blackjack Creek and shift density away from the creek. And so, we had a very robust public hearing. We did direct mailers to the individual properties who were being changed, and I think we had 60 or so people at the Planning Commission meeting, and it was one of the best attended meetings I've been to, and I think we had everybody leave the meeting happy. So, the ordinance before you, if you have any questions about it, I'm happy to answer those, but the staff recommendation is to approve it as presented, and I should note that both the before and after map are attached to the packet, and so, I think, you know, I think they were actually labeled very clearly in the digital form, and I'm not sure if the label made it onto the map, but the... Oh, yes, thank you. Yeah, the 2016 map obviously is the old one, and the 2017 map is the new one.
So, you're not going to read the three pages of policy changes into the record?
No. I can, if you'd like.
I move to adopt an ordinance adopting the 2017 Comprehensive Plan Amendment as presented.
There's a motion? Second by Councilmember Kachardi. Before, I just want to commend Nick and his staff. For us to have 236 land use changes and nobody here at tonight's meeting pounding on the podium, I think, is a credit to Mr. Bond and his staff. They had a packed house at the Planning Commission meeting, and I got a number of emails about, from property owners about that process there, how much time he and his staff spent with individual property owners, so they've really done a good job communicating with those individual property owners, so I would commend them for that. Other comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Ashby.
Yes, I would just like to say, one of the things we're doing is we are removing the transportation plan that we completed in 2009 out of one of the appendix because, for some very good reasons. I just want to make sure that that hard work is not lost and that it's retained somewhere, and when we get back to that project, we will have a well-vetted starting point.
Other comments or questions?
I'll just say briefly that these were also discussed in committee and in work studies, so we had lots of opportunity to look at these and did hear good things about the overwhelmingly positive Planning Commission meeting.
All right. With that, you be voting on approving the 2017 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. We are to 7E, adoption of an ordinance adopting the 2017, 2018 budget amid biennial review and modification. Mr. Crocker.
Mayor, council members, again, for the record, Noah Crocker, Finance Director for the City of Port Orchard. Business item 7E, earlier this evening, a public hearing was held for the council to take testimony on the budget amid biennial review and modification. Adopting an ordinance, the ordinance before you is adopting an ordinance, amending ordinance number 040-16, adopting the 2017, 2018 biennial budget. As established by RCW 35A, 34130, amid biennial review of the biennial budget is required. The Finance Department has consulted and reviewed possible modifications of the biennial budget with state departments, mayor, and council. The city has focused its criteria for mid-year modifications to those that are items of corrections required and are large capital with budgetary impacts. Again, for the record, the budget ordinance reflects a reduction of $40,000 from current expense fund, an increase appropriation of $11,000 for change orders for Clifton Anderson Hill Road, an increase in transfer appropriation of $11,000 from impact fee to the Street Capital Projects Fund Number 304, an increase appropriation of $623,000 from the Water and Sewer Fund 401, and lastly, an increase appropriation of $400,000 from Storm Drainage Utility Fund 421 for design work for Annapolis Creek Culver and Restoration. Staff recommends to turn this up over to the Finance Committee for recommendation.
Mr. Klaassen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending the 2017, 2018 biennial budgets for the City of Port Orchard.
Second.
Second by Mr. Deener. Further discussions of the budget? Hearing none, be voting on the 2017, 2018 biennial budget review and adjustments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. We are to 7F, adoption of an ordinance adopting a mixed-use development pilot program. Mr. Bond.
Yes, thank you. The mixed-use pilot program that we've developed and that you've heard a little bit about already tonight is a project that really came out of our Unified Development Code update that was passed earlier this summer. After updating the Unified Development Code, it was our plan to begin revamping the zoning code, and as we started talking about the timelines for doing that internally and with the mayor, I think the mayor was wanting things to move a little bit faster, especially downtown, because there was some energy and excitement around the possibility of seeing some downtown redevelopment. And so, we looked at different ways that we could approach getting some of the zoning changes in place sooner in that area, and I set aside my work on the overall zoning code to work on this smaller project, and what we came up with was a mixed-use pilot program. And the pilot program is really intended to do a couple of things. Number one, our current zoning allows for mixed-use development, and it has downtown for going on 20 years, maybe longer. I didn't go back past 2002 to continue looking at how long this has been allowed, but in that time, we haven't seen a single mixed-use project come forward. And in my four and a half years that I've been with the city, I've studied our downtown regulations, and I think I really dug into it a lot when we purchased the 640 Bay Street Property as we looked at what's actually allowed on that property, and as I tried to help the appraisal, the appraiser who was doing the appraisal for the property understand the development potential. And we realized that we had some real problems, not just with the development standards, but also with the process and the potential risk that a developer would have to take to even attempt to do a project downtown. And in my four and a half years here, we haven't had anyone even kicking the tires on a mixed-use project in Port Orchard. And so, it was clear that something wasn't quite working right, and so, when we dug into the code a little bit further, we realized that our existing code had a number of problems, and I think the key problems related to our density allowances, which at the time that I arrived here was 30 units per acre, and as we saw when we went on our tour, typical mixed-use developments are in, you know, are somewhere north of 100 units per acre on an average project. It was also the parking cost. We required 1.5 stalls per dwelling, which at a cost for underground parking or a garage structure-type parking of $30,000 to $60,000 a stall really drives up the project cost and can kill a project pretty quickly. Then we had a design review process that was very robust but poorly defined, and we didn't have written standards that had been adopted by council that provided examples of exactly what the city wanted to see, and the process was really poorly defined in terms of what a developer could expect going into that process. And then the final thing was our height standards were all over the place, depending on which side of Bay Street you were on, whether you were in the wings, the central DOD, and there were streets that divided height districts, and it was very confusing, and I think that by putting things on a map, it made it much easier to understand. But the other thing that was required in the old code was that you had to get a conditional use permit to get the maximum height, and so not only did you have to go to a design review board, you also had to go to the hearing examiner to be able to do a project. And so, what we've created here actually isn't replacing our existing code. These are alternative standards, and they are designed to create a couple of project examples that we can review and use as we try to update our code for the long term and permanently. The pilot program seeks to create 200 units of housing downtown. It could be up to 250, depending on how the project, the residential component balances out based on building footprint and the feasibility of a project, but the idea is that we're going to create an application window, and there's an initial application window, and then there's the period during which the mixed-use pilot program is open for people to come in and submit applications for development. The level of interest in this initial application window, which right now is proposed to be April 2nd through April 30th, if we have a whole lot of interest, there's a competitive process built into the mixed-use pilot program. If we don't have a lot of interest, it's going to be a first-come, first-served basis for development, and all development under the program requires a development agreement so that we can negotiate and work out the details of a project proposal within the framework of this ordinance. So, the proposal is based on a map, and on that map, you'll see that there's a mixed-use pilot program, District 1, 2, 3, and 4, and those correspond to the various height limits. Area 1 has a method of measurement that is different from 2, 3, and 4, and that's because it's in an area that's currently in the view protection overlay district, and it's a more unique topography because the, it's between Bay Street and Perry, which are two parallel streets that are both relatively flat, and so we wanted to make sure that we were using the uphill grade to measure height. All of the other sites, when we looked at topography, generally had diagonal slopes cutting across the site, and we chose to use an average grade and a maximum number of stories, either 3, 4, or 5. So, the proposed ordinance, I think, removes a lot of the uncertainty for a developer. It provides flexibility through the development agreement process, and I think it creates some urgency because, like I said, it's a 14-month window to submit for projects, and ideally, people are going to, in six months, be submitting applications to participate in this program because there is that initial application window, and if you definitely want to do a project, you're going to want to get into the program early in case it fills up. So, with that said, I know Councilmember Deener had a question about the uses that were allowed, and I was going to speak to those. The ordinance includes a list of uses, and unlike our current code, which is very specific in the uses that are listed, I mean, we get into the weeds in terms of boat sales versus car sales versus every possible use that you can consider. We had already started on a zoning code overhaul, and in this ordinance, we've included definitions for the uses that we're proposing, and they're a little bit broader, and so, we have retail sales 1, and that is a definition, that's the lowest impact of retail sales. We have restaurants 1, 2, and 3, and those differ depending on whether alcohol is or is not served in those facilities. I think generally, the uses that we're allowing are consistent with what is currently allowed in the DOD. We're just stating it in simpler terms and relying on our definitions more rather than trying to list every single use, and that's a transition that we're trying to make overall in our zoning code. We also obviously recognize previous discussions of DOD uses. Obviously, the core of downtown is not included in the map, but we have had a lot of discussions over the years about whether daycares are allowed on the ground floor or whether professional offices are allowed on the ground floor, and given the types of buildings that we're looking to create, which are mixed-use with residential units above, I think we want at least 10 units of housing in each project, we felt that the uses that were listed as storefront uses were the most compatible with the residential uses that would be upstairs, and they have the most, I guess, symbiotic relationship between the two, and so that's how we came up with it. But happy to answer any other questions that you have, and staff recommendation is to approve the ordinance as presented.
Councilmember Deener.
I move to approve an ordinance adopting the mixed-use pilot project as presented. Second.
Second by Councilmember Ashby. So, that discussion, comments?
Nick, I seem to remember reading about grocery store bonus. Is that in this or another?
That is, thank you. Yes, the, one of the things that has appeared consistently through our Comprehensive Plan, both in the old 2008 plan and the new one, is the need to provide access to food for residents, and you read articles, and Port Orchard doesn't have this problem like other parts of the country where you have what are called food deserts, but providing easy access to affordable, quality food is an important goal, and it's throughout our Comprehensive Plan, but one of the things that we've heard repeatedly is that there's not a good place to buy groceries downtown, and because this is a transit-oriented program, it was our goal to make sure that somebody who was living downtown, that we were at least encouraging one of the key components of living to be within walking distance of these areas, which corresponds with a reduction in parking requirements and also the opportunity to live car-free. So, the bonus works like this, if you put, and we sort of used, not that we're picking favorites in terms of what kind of grocery store we want, but a Trader Joe's typical store is about 10,000 square feet, and so, if someone is willing to put a 10,000-square-foot grocery store in, which is a fairly small store, we would give them a 10-foot height bonus over 20,000 square feet of area. So, it's certainly a square footage bonus as well as the additional 10 feet of height. And I don't think there's a lot of sites where that's going to work. I think, you know, potentially over at Bethel and Base, the Bay Street area is probably where it's most viable, and of course, we had a Safeway at West Bay Center for years. So, I think, it's our hope that we would be able to recruit somebody to open a store like that downtown.
Thank you. I'd just like to share the observation, and it could be that I work in Seattle and that you see a lot of different things there, but I understand that a lot of the complexes there, for example, the Wajamaya, which is an international grocery shop, the apartments there have a waiting list. Apparently, they're very popular with people, at least in the Seattle area, and I was realizing that we don't have anything like that here, like Safeway doesn't have anyone living above, same with Fred Meyer, and it might be an interesting model.
Yeah, just a little commentary on that. I have a theory of real estate that the best possible investment you can make is to buy a house within, you know, a walking distance of a grocery store. I think whether it's in North Tacoma, I live about 10 blocks from a grocery store, but, you know, I think especially with younger folks, it's really key to be able to walk to those places or to have easy access to food, and, you know, things have definitely changed in the grocery market.
Others? Councilmember Ashby?
I just...
I just, I'm very supportive of the program. I do believe that if it is successful, and we don't know exactly what the success may be, but if it is successful, I think we're going to have to address the hours of the foot ferry between Port Orchard and Bremerton. I think that it will be very important to have that foot ferry service on Sundays. I don't think, I think that that's a connection that's going to be important. And I just think that in the future, that's something that we will probably want to consider, how we would make that happen.
There's wishing to comment? Mr. Deener?
So I have some comments and some questions and I'll lead with my comments. And I was prepared for a pretty robust discussion about this tonight and so was, you know, prepared to persuade even my peers who might be on the fence about this. So bear with me while I go through my notes. So I'm excited about this. The city has discussed mixed use developments to encourage desirable growth for many years. We've commented on the livability of our downtown corridor for years and the corridor has not had a successful and sustained trend of development or redevelopment in the dozen years that I've lived here. Port Orchard cannot set aside its growth and no competent consultant or attorney would tell you that we can't, so we've got to manage it. We've got generational needs, we've got affordability needs, we've got mobility and commute needs, people who for one reason or another do not or cannot own a car. And we need to capitalize on a great waterfront corridor. Most would agree that the waterfront market will catch up to Port Orchard so that it's not if, but when. And this program gives the city the chance to manage it and get in front of this process by which we could see some good quality development. Most who are more familiar with private sector development trends and return on investment than I am believes that we'd be lucky to see a response out of this, but two or three would be a great indicator of Port Orchard's position in the development market. Our proposal will be a great development and a great demonstration of code, which is going to be based on the livable, walkable, and vibrant communities that we've toured and that we have heard we all liked and which communities across western Washington are competing for. We've seen no lively or well-thought mixed use projects in 15 years. That was in staff notes and I tried to think about that and refute that and I couldn't. So that is an issue as well. Staff cites that there's regulatory obstacles that will be addressed with the pilot projects and design code. I think it'd be hard to argue that the current code is underperforming and I think it would be easy to argue that the current code is underperforming in certain areas. This includes obstacles to parking, design review processes, and predictability and height concerns. The applications that we get will be received by a cadre of professionals and the public to ensure good fit. The city has an opportunity to set the pace and the environment for quality development and we should take the lead on ensuring that these well-thought projects will occur within our city. And the proposed ordinance has, you know, four pages of supportive recitals and several comp plan policies, which, some of which are very specific in its support for this. And so with that, I intend to support this. And then I do have just a couple of questions.
Are there questions? Go ahead.
Okay, so on page 102 is where the document talks about developer agreements and development agreements. Can you talk about the review, recommendation, and approval process for development agreements real briefly?
Yeah, so actually, the development agreements are authorized both in state law and we have a city code chapter on development agreements and the process that has to be followed. And so you do have public hearing requirements for a development agreement. And so the development agreement, there is an opportunity for the public to comment on a proposed development agreement. They're not, if the project meets the standards of this program, there's not a whole lot that you can do about an aspect of the development that complies with the standards. But there are a whole number of things that have to be sorted out in a development agreement that I think are totally negotiable and totally within the city council's discretion. Are you interested in, I guess, the processes as it applies to this program in terms of the window? So we attached a template for a development agreement and it's a real rough draft, but essentially, the two pieces of a development agreement that are a must are valuable consideration, trading hands. And so even though this program is only good for 14 months for submitting applications, we assume that getting a project off the ground could take two or three years. And so we would expect that we would be granting the right to do development in accordance with this program and giving people time to put together a project design team, submit building permits, and bid a project and get it built. And so that's one of the reasons that we have the development agreement process. I think that the, you're actually applying for participation in this program, you're actually applying for participation through a development agreement. And so we have a bunch of requirements listed in Section C for what has to be submitted with the application for participation. And presumably, all of these are going to be referenced in the development agreement. So a site plan, building elevation drawings, I think that there's a massing study, color renderings of what you want your project to look like. And so I think the development agreement will at least approve at a conceptual level what a project is going to look like. And then it's going to basically give a green light to the developer to go forward and actually prepare the architectural plans to build what is conceptually represented in the development agreement. And so it's, you know, right now, we have design reviewed for downtown, which is a similar type process where you're not actually preparing architectural plans for the design review board. You're preparing renderings of what you want it to look like. And once you get that approval, you go forward and you design the building. This is a similar type of step, but it involves the city council rather than a design review board. And it follows the development agreement process, which is clearly defined in code, as opposed to the design review process, which is, which is quite vague in the existing downtown overlay district code.
Other questions?
Yes, so on page 108, under number 10C, there's landscaping requirements and some of those can be street trees, but also planters and hanging baskets. And I would want to make sure that we can ensure longevity with some of those hanging baskets, for example. That's just a comment.
Okay. Yeah, I think the key is that irrigation is required for all landscaping here. And that is because it's downtown and we want things to look attractive and alive. And you're not actually required to provide landscaping. It's, the requirement of the code is that your site, and because the DOD already allows 100% site coverage, if you have a lot downtown, you can build from property line to property line, street to street. And so that is still allowed. It's only if you choose not to cover your entire site that you would have to either landscape it, provide a hardscape or plaza, or do some sort of environmental restoration where you're removing blackberries and other invasive type species and replacing them with native plantings. So yes, hanging baskets can be a part of that. I would actually expect that those would be in the right-of-way as opposed to on a site, but they could be on a site. And if they are used, they would be irrigated. But landscaping is only required if you leave some portion of your site unbuilt.
And then one last comment, really maybe a two-part comment and question is, on page 109, under number 13, we talk about right-of-way vacations up to eight feet when a balcony or some other feature may project into a right-of-way. My first question is, is this, are we locking this into place tonight or is there room for tweaking this if we want to tweak it? And the second part of that is, we need to probably identify some metrics by which a vacation of right-of-way is acceptable, not just because I want to maximize the buildability of my lot and then some, because eight feet into a right-of-way can be a pretty significant impact.
Yeah, I don't think this is granting that as a right and council still has discretion on whether to vacate any of its right-of-ways through our vacation statutes. What we discussed here, and which actually I did learn something new in this discussion, is that some cities vacate airspace rights. And so if the balcony is going to permanently project into the right-of-way, they'll vacate at, you know, 15 feet and above, up to eight feet into the right-of-way. And so that's something that we would negotiate as part of the development agreement. And then the vacation action would be a separate ordinance that would follow the development agreement. But you have discretion on whether to approve or deny a vacation of your right-of-way. I don't think this is granting that outright.
Okay. And I think we would rely on staff for guidance. Thank you very much. I applaud your work on this.
Thank you.
Charlie?
Well, just a couple of comments to begin with. I know in the nearly 15 years that I've lived here, I don't think there's been a topic around town that's probably been more prevalent than, you know, just kind of the resurgence of downtown. And I know that almost two years I've been on the council that this entire group, it's been a priority. And it's, again, anytime you talk to any resident of Port Orchard, this topic comes up. And so it's just, I think it's absolutely fantastic that we've come this far and I commend Nick and your team for doing what you're doing. I think this pilot program has a lot of upside and protects a lot of downside. One other topic that really hasn't been talked about tonight that I think is important though, because there's been a lot of conversations around it, is just want to hit on the relationship to the design guidelines that we're currently working on as well.
Yes, thank you. And really, there are three pieces that are moving forward that are independent actions but are related and the mixed use pilot program is one of them. The architectural design guidelines, I think last spring, you executed a contract with Makers Architecture and we've been working with them for the last three to four months. And we put together a technical advisory committee and we've had a couple of meetings. We actually have an open house here tomorrow night in the council chambers from 6 until 8. And so, you know, it's one thing to remove barriers to development, but we still need the safeguards to ensure that we get quality development. And so the contract with Makers is all about creating administratively enforceable architectural and site design standards that provide for everything, for how you mix finishing materials, how windows are recessed on a building, providing a minimum amount of glazing or window area on the facade of a building, modulating roof lines if you have a particularly long or massive building. All of those things are going to be defined in our design guidelines, or our design standards, I should say, is what we're calling them. And those are going to create very black and white standards. And there will be departures available to each of those standards where if you want to depart, we're still going to use the designer review board to evaluate those deviations from the administrative standard. But unlike our current situation where you go to a designer review board and the designer review board sort of helps you design your building and says, oh, why don't you, you know, put a few extra windows up here? It's not really based on anything or any kind of technical manual. This is actually providing great clarity to the development community. And I know that the architects on our committee don't love this because, and I would agree from the examples that I've seen, they design beautiful structures. But not all developers and not all architects do great work all of the time. And so you have to unfortunately plan for, you know, not the best architects and in the process, you tend to frustrate the really good architects. But I think that the approach that we've taken, we're using menus to allow people to select ways to achieve certain goals so they have a list of options for how to get where they need to be in terms of our regulations. And I think it's about as flexible as we can be while still ensuring quality development. And so the track for the design standards is that there, we're going to have a presentation at the planet, we have an open house tomorrow. The December meeting of the planning commission, we're going to have a presentation from the consultant and he's going to kind of introduce a whole lot of variables and things that we need to make decisions on. The planning commission's going to provide its feedback. They'll go back and finalize that draft document. We'll have legal review and then we're going to bring it forward for a hearing in January at the planning commission with adoption in February. And like I said, the pilot program starts in April. If for some reason, we fall behind on our design guideline project, which I'm not planning on doing, we would want to push back the pilot program by a month or two to allow us to finish that work because that's a critical piece to ensure quality under this program. So I guarantee that I will be here in March with an ordinance to delay that if we don't have design guidelines ready to go by then. But I'm hopeful that I'll have those to you in February for adoption.
Thank you for that.
That's a good question. And also, it's important to point out too, those design guidelines are citywide. They're not just, but they are a very important piece to this process because we're relaxing some things, but we want better quality. I think it's, this is a starting point for downtown and we need these first few projects to be quality projects and set the tone for the future projects. So that's why those design guidelines are so important. Mr. Clausen and Ms. Luke O'Reilly haven't commented yet and then I'll come back to others.
Well, I just wanted to echo a couple of things that have been said here tonight and commend Nick for this effort. This is a very comprehensive, very thorough effort. This is one of the best documents I've read in a long, long time that really truly takes transit oriented development to heart in what you're proposing. When you go through and read some of these goals, I mean, it really jumps out at you that we're trying to build or encourage the development of high density, yet more pedestrian oriented type of development where folks can access grocery stores and parks and transportation without their automobile, which, you know, obviously, I would be promoting transit, but there are other opportunities like bicycling, which is, this encourages that and walking. So I'm very, very impressed with this. I'm very hopeful that this is going to do what we're hoping it to do, which is going to encourage the private development in downtown. Certainly, what we've been doing for the last 20 years isn't working. Downtown looks worse today than it did 20 years ago as far as the basic condition of downtown. So I'm encouraged by this and support it wholeheartedly.
Councilmember Luke O'Reilly?
Yes, thank you, Nick, for having spent a considerable amount of time with me yesterday answering my questions. And I've had some concerns about density in our downtown area. This has been ongoing, of course. Port Orchard is not Bremerton. And I have always been a little hesitant in wanting to have tall buildings here or have structures that do look like Bremerton. Because I've always envisioned our downtown to be the sort of smaller scale destination that we've been talking about all these years. On the other hand, after our discussion, I do believe that the design standards are key to getting what we want. And I am still concerned about the heights. I'm still concerned about how it looks and how much light is blocked in the Bay Street corridor. I've been in cities where the tall buildings don't allow light. And I'm, you know, I'm trying to wrap my hands around all of this and figure this out, but we do need to move forward and I will stay really involved with the design standards process. I'm going to come tomorrow night. It is time for us to have some change in downtown. And I do like that we have more control of what's going on. We've been at a standstill in our town now with having a landowner that owns a good chunk of the town and we can't do anything about it. So to get this process going, I'm ready to do this and I'm supporting it. And I really do thank you, Nick, for the time you took.
Mr. Deener?
There's not much I can add to what the others have said, but for me, I've been here about five years and it is one of the most common topics in this town is to talk about downtown and what can we do about it? What can we do about it? How can we save the downtown? And so I have to take my hat off to Nick Bond and his staff for assembling a pilot program that I think is going to be the first catalyst and will get some momentum and get some action going downtown in the development area. And I'm supportive of it and I look forward to seeing the progress.
Mr. Deener?
So I missed one of my first scribbled notes, which was what I've heard so far. And I've talked to friends and neighbors and people about this and everything's ranged from, you know, cautious optimism to one of great delight in what we're doing. But nobody has said they have concerns about this so that we shouldn't do it. The other thing that I've heard is from people, a fair amount of people who work in Port Orchard, they're also excited about this as well.
Mr. Jack?
I have a kind of picky question for Nick. On page 102, we have a, sorry, page 103, there is an illustration of an example of a massing study. Can you just briefly explain what the purpose of a massing study is? Obviously, that's not how it's going to look.
Correct. It's really about showing the three-dimensional building envelope in the context of its surroundings. And so sometimes, massing studies will also include shadowing and shading from light. But at a minimum, you want some sort of 3D but at a minimum, you want some sort of 3D rendering that shows the existing structures next to the proposed structure so that you can really evaluate either the environmental impact of the structure when you really understand the scale of it, rather than just seeing a rendering of the building, not showing the adjacent buildings. So it's just providing context.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Questions? Last comments? Okay. Voting on? Provening an ordinance, adopting a mixed-use development pilot program. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? The motion carries. All right, we are on to the next item, which is 7G, adoption of an ordinance amending chapter 1.04 code, the Port Orchard Municipal Code. Ms. Cates?
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilmembers, as you may have heard, in July of 2017, the classification of the city of Port Orchard changed to that of a non-charter code city. Due to this reclassification, certain changes to the Port Orchard Municipal Code are needed. This particular change is simply an addition of the optional municipal code section that applies to this code. So this particular ordinance is just proposed revisions to update the revised Code of Washington references applicable to the adoption of the city's code and to include the relevant section of the optional municipal code. So staff recommends adoption of the ordinance amending chapter 104 code of the Port Orchard Municipal Code as presented.
Yeah, I think you'll see in many of these next ordinances in the red line version, it's changing from the second-class city to the 35A, and that's, this primarily is just the reference which RCW we're now governed under. So with that, is there a motion?
Mr. Kachardi?
Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 1.04 code of the Port Orchard Municipal Code as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion of the item before us? With that, we're voting on item 7G, amending chapter 1.04 code of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next is 7H, adoption of an ordinance amending chapters 2.32, employees' retirement system of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. Ms. Cates?
Thank you. When the determination was made earlier this year to reclassify the city of Port Orchard as non-charter code city, I undertook a review of the code to determine if changes to the code were needed as a result of conflicts between the optional municipal code and the city's code. In reviewing chapter 2.32, the Port Orchard Municipal Code, it was determined that a reference to state law in that section was just simply incorrect. The reference to the section, RCW 414410, does not exist. It did exist, it looks like it's just a typo. So that's the only thing that's changing with this particular ordinance is making that, making that the correct reference to the RCW. So the recommendation is to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Ms. Luke O'Reilly?
I move to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 2.32, employees' retirement system of the POMC as presented.
Motion, is there a second? Second by Mr. Clausen. Discussion or questions? Okay, we're voting on adoption of an ordinance amending chapter 2.3, employees' retirement system of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to 7I, adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Code, Chapter 6.04, garbage and refuse of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. Ms. Cates?
Yes. Again, this is a similar ordinance to the first ordinance that I presented this evening. It's simply a change or an addition to the code referencing the optional municipal code that now applies to the city as a non-charter code city. I'm happy to answer any questions, but the staff recommends adoption of this ordinance as presented.
Mr. Donlin?
Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 6.04, garbage and refuse of the Port Orchard Municipal Code as presented.
Motion and a second. And as you can see in the red line version, it's just referencing the 35A reference again. So with that, any questions? We're voting on adoption of an ordinance amending chapter 6.04, garbage and refus of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to 7J, adoption of an ordinance amending chapters 12.08, vacations of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. Ms. Cates?
Yes. Again, this is a similar ordinance to the previous in that the only change to the ordinance is the addition of a reference to the optional municipal code. So staff recommends the adoption of this ordinance as presented.
Mr. Shane?
I move to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 1208, vacations of the Port Orchard Municipal Code as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Now you'd be voting on adoption of an ordinance amending chapter 12.08, vacations of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to 7K, adoption of an ordinance amending chapters 13.40, water and sewers of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. Ms. Cates?
Yes. Again, this is a similar change that there's, in addition to the code of reference to the optional municipal code section that applies, along with that, there's the change of the reference to treasurer, change to finance director. That's the new title for that position. So those are the only two changes to be made, and staff recommends adoption of this ordinance as presented.
Shout it?
Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 13.04, water and sewers of the Port Orchard Municipal Code as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. So any discussion of this ordinance? Hearing none, you'd be voting on an ordinance amending 13.04, water and sewers of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to 7L, which is adoption of an ordinance amending chapter 13.06, storm drainage utility of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. Ms. Cates?
Yes, this one is very similar to the one that you just approved.
Really?
Addition of the optional municipal code section and a change of city treasurer to finance director is the only changes, and staff recommends the adoption of this ordinance as presented.
Mr. Clausen?
Well, I can't help the attorney's voice, but I can help my cohorts on the table, so I will make a motion on this particular ordinance. So I move to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 13.06, storm drainage utility of the Port Orchard Municipal Code as presented.
Second. Second by Mr. Kachardi. I know this seems redundant, but we felt it was important to bring them all as separate ordinances. So with, any questions on this one? Hearing none, we're voting on amending chapters 13.06, storm drainage utility of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to 7M, adoption of an ordinance adopting 2017 zoning map. Mr. Bond, it's your turn.
So earlier this evening, we approved the 2017 comprehensive plan updates, including revisions to the land use map designations of approximately 236 properties in several areas of the city. In order to implement that portion of the comprehensive plan, a zoning map update is required to ensure that the zoning map is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And so in your packet, you had two maps. One was the existing, and one was the proposed map showing the final zoning to implement the comprehensive plan designations. And just one item on this, at the planning commission hearing, when we discussed this issue, the area off of Golden Rod near Black Jack Terrace, and I can't think of the other name of the subdivision there, a citizen actually pointed out that our zoning map and comp plan were inconsistent at that location. And so we had a choice of either changing the comprehensive plan map to downzone it to low density from medium density, or change the zoning map from low density to R8, which is a medium-density designation. So we chose to make the zoning map consistent with the comprehensive plan at that location, and that ensured that we were implementing the comprehensive plan. And so that was one item that I forgot to mention as part of the comprehensive plan presentation, but it was on both of those maps.
Mr. Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution declaring certain water sewer utility. Oops.
No. Whoopsie.
I got to grab the wrong one here.
Off one.
I'm off one. Where'd it go?
Here.
159. Let me start over. I move to adopt an ordinance adopting the 2017 zoning map as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second on the zoning map amendment. Are there any comments or questions on the zoning map? Mr. Shane?
I have a quick question for Nick. Is the place you're thinking of Caleb Southwest?
Yes.
Caleb Place?
Correct.
Interesting area.
Okay, other questions or comments? Councilmember Ashby?
Well, no, I just was confused because both zoning maps were titled the same, but I did manage to figure out which was which, so.
My apologies, I meant for there to be a label on there, but I forgot that we had already adopted a new zoning map when we did the McCormick Woods R8 zone.
Oh, right.
Earlier this year. So there are, this is our second map we're adopting this year.
Thanks for that clarification. Other questions or comments? Okay, we're voting on the ordinance adopting the 2017 zoning map. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to 7N, adoption of a resolution declaring certain sewer and water utility equipment surplus. Who did you piss off to get all the way down there with that?
I don't know, I just feel really bad for.
You've not played nice with the clerk?
I just feel really bad for it because this is such a boring subject to have to compete against Nick's agenda tonight. Or Sharon, so. Anyway, bear with me. Assets of the city that are no longer usable are no longer valuable to the city or are surplus to the city needs may be removed from the city's ownership, sold, or in any other way disposed of with a declaration of surplus by the city council. And we talked about the office equipment blueprint copier. RCW 399440 requires a public hearing prior to disposal of the equipment owned by the utility. Public hearing was previously held for the disposition of the water sewer utility equipment listed above. Money from sale of surplus properties is deposited into the fund which own the equipment. When disposal is to the general public through direct sale, sealed bid or auction, final determination of value shall be the highest responsible bid offer. The city may transfer a surplus asset to another public agency upon written request and a determination that it is in the public's interest to do so. Staff recommends approval of the resolution declaring certain water sewer utility equipment surplus and allowing for its disposition.
Councilmember Luke O'Reilly?
I move to adopt a resolution declaring certain water sewer utility equipment as surplus and authorizing the disposition thereof.
Second.
Second. Discussion of the disposal of this?
Is this coal and steam powered, 1997?
I was gonna say, this had a good run. Twenty years, wow. Yeah, it's, it's not going back to like the old ammonia blueprint machine, but it looked like one. And actually, South Tep School District's technical group is, will be transferring that to them, so.
Nice. My question was, will the sale of this surplus blueprint copier, will that help offset the $500,000 worth of water we buy from Bremerton?
Thirty bucks.
No.
With that, any other questions or comments? Okay, we'd be voting on the, on a resolution declaring certain sewer and water utility equipment surplus. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to 7O, adoption of a resolution repealing resolutions number, wow, 082-16, 08, 083-16, 017-15, 08-15, 028-12, 029-12, 030-10, 031-10, 039-16, 040-16, and establishing certain employee benefits for non-union represented employees classified as FLSA, non-exempt and executive exempt. With that, Ms. Howard, our human resources director, is in the audience this evening and is going to explain to us what all that means.
Thank you, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Employee wage pay rates are addressed on a yearly basis for non-union employees requested by the Finance Committee. The following is a change that is recommended by the Finance Committee to match the union contracts. One, all employees covered by this resolution shall be classified and compensated in accordance with the city's biennial budget. 1.1, effective January 1, 2018, the rates of pay set forth above shall be increased by 2.5%. The recommendation is that staff recommends adoption of resolution repealing resolutions number 082-16, 083-16, 017-15, 018-15, 028-12, 029-12, 030-10, 031-10, 039-16, 040-16, and approving the employee benefits policy authorizing a rate of pay increase of 2.5 COLA effective January 1, 2018.
Mr. Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, just in case somebody missed one of those numbers, get your pencil ready. I move to adopt a resolution repealing resolutions number 082-16, 083-16, 017-15, 018-15, 028-12, 029-12, 030-10, 031-10, 039-16, and 040-16, and approving the employee benefits policy to reflect a rate of pay increase of 2.5% COLA effective January 1, 2018, for non-union represented employees classified as FLSA, non-exempt and executive exempt. And I read that from memory.
Second. Motion and a second. And just for clarification, this is treating our, an ordinance or resolution that is treating our non-representative employees and giving them the same benefits of our represented employees. So this is something that we have done for years. Every year, it prevents us from potentially having more labor unions negotiate with us. We treat our non-represented at the same level as our represented employees, it keeps them happy. So with that, other questions? Mr. Crocker?
Yeah, I just want to take this opportunity to thank the clerk's office and Ms. Howard here for identifying all these resolutions that really need to clean up that we're repealing here. So this is again part of our initiative to clean up some old stuff, streamline our process to have a clear resolution about impacting employees' composition of the COLA. And in part of that work, we found out we had to repeal quite a number of other resolutions that have already been on the books. So I want to thank them particularly. Thank you.
Which resolutions are we repealing?
There are.
Other questions or comments?
Okay, we're voting on repealing a number of resolutions, and you will be approving a COLA effective for non-represented employees of 2.5 effective January 1. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to 7P, adoption of a resolution adopting the 2018 city council meeting schedule. And so that, it appears is me. So at our last meeting, remember, we amended our code to allow us to have a more flexible meeting schedule, and you can see in the packet there that we have addressed the December meeting, changing our December meetings for this year, which will make the two business meetings a no-work study in December, the second and third Tuesdays in December of this year. And then we have, we just outlined a schedule of meetings for the remainder of 2018. And you'll see that we're proposing at this point, and it will depend on work and whether we can get through all of our work, but that we would take a summer break again in August. We would compress those two weeks again to the second and third week, and then we do the same thing again in December. But other than that, we have meetings, as you can see in the schedule, proposed the second, third, and fourth Tuesday of most months next year. So with that, Mr. Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution adopting a schedule for the remainder of the 2017 calendar year and adopting a schedule for 2018 as presented.
Second.
The motion and a second about the schedule for next year and for 2017. Mr. Deener, do you have a question?
Well, just that the resolution calls out meeting time and place. Well, just that the resolution calls out meeting time and place, but I don't think time is actually captured anywhere in this document.
Be a good point. I know our meeting time is kept, is set by code, and we've amended that code, so it's probably just, we've probably just said a shed, said the meeting date was...
Or schedule, sure.
Or schedule, yes. Meeting dates are the schedule, yes. So good point. Other questions or comments? Okay, we're voting on a resolution adopting the 2017 and 2018 city council meeting schedule. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the schedule has been approved. We are to our last item, believe it or not, seven Q. I don't know that in all the years, Mr. Clausen, I've been around, have you ever gotten to Q before?
I, I don't remember ever getting to that level. So you hold a record, Mayor.
That's not a goal.
It's not a goal. Sorry. I was kind of proud of it. Seven Q is adoption of a resolution declaring real property owned by the city located at 640 Bay Street as surplus and authorizing it for sale. Mr. Bond?
Yes. The city acquired the property at 640 Bay Street in 2015 as a future administrative facility site. After this acquisition, the city also acquired 720 Prospect Street and has since moved the Department of Community Development to that location. The city no longer needs the 640 Bay Street property and wishes to declare that property as surplus to the needs of the city. Upon declaring the property as surplus, the city plans to publicly offer the 640 Bay Street property through a request for proposal process, seeking a proposal to purchase and redevelop the property. In order to offer this property through an RFP, it must first be declared a surplus. This action is being considered in conjunction with two other actions which we've discussed tonight, which was amending the comprehensive plan to remove this property from the capital facilities plan, and also to approve the issuance of a RFP for the 640 Bay Street property. And actually, I realize that item two, we, the resolution builds the RFP process into the resolution by authorizing the mayor to get rid of that property. I did hand out to you tonight a copy of the draft request for proposals. This was also discussed at land use and economic development in the last, at the last of those two meetings. And so the proposal right now is on Friday to put the RFP on the website. We would then advertise in the paper and probably in one of the daily, either the Daily Journal of Commerce or the Puget Sound Business Journal, one of the papers across the water to solicit developers who would be interested in doing something like this. And we would expect to hold at least one meeting where people can come and ask questions of staff, and then individual developers could also schedule pre-application meetings to meet with us about the specifics of the site, so that they better understand what they're getting into and what they would have to submit in terms of a proposal. So right now, we're declaring the property as surplus and authorizing its sale, and that sale would occur through a development agreement process, or I'm sorry, a RFP process. And our goal is really to see the property developed into some productive fashion as opposed to being purchased and sitting like it is now, not contributing a whole lot to downtown other than to display gravel and a picket fence. So anyway, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Mr. Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution declaring 640 Bay Street as surplus. Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions or comments about declaring this property surplus? Hearing none, we'll be voting on a resolution declaring real property owned by the city and located at 640 Bay Street as surplus and authorizing it for sale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We are to our council committee reports. We will, Mr. Clausen with Finance Committee?
The only thing to report is we have one scheduled for the 21st at 5:00 PM here at City Hall.
And Economic Development and Tourism, I know you just met?
We did, we met yesterday, and as has been our practice this year, we spent the first half hour with our downtown, or I shouldn't say downtown, with various business associations, and we reviewed the Roger Brooks webinars that we have watched all year, and we reviewed those. We discussed ways to implement actions from them, and many of the suggestions that we, that Roger Brooks present is already taking place in Port Orchard. It may not look exactly the way Mr. Brooks presented it, but there is a lot of activity in Port Orchard already. But we reviewed those webinars and discussed our actions, and will continue that discussion in January. And I wanted to comment or compliment Brady Miller. He came to our meeting in October and discussed some important vision issues for us, and I'm hoping that he will join us again with his insights and work with us. It was very, very helpful. We then discussed our, the summer foot ferry, our ridership and our expenses for the summer. And we have, we will be scheduling meetings with our partners about next year, what that's going to look like. And then we had time and we talked about the mixed-use pilot program that we approved this evening, and also the RFP on the 640 Bay Street property. That was our meeting. We do not have anything pressing for December, so at this point, we're not intending to have a December meeting unless something urgent comes up in our community development department.
Thank you for your report. Utility Committee?
Yes, we'll be meeting this next week, Monday, 9:30 AM here at City Hall.
Okay, and the Sewer Advisory Committee?
That's January 17, 6:30 PM here at City Hall.
And I do have something to report as it relates to the SAC committee. You, a month or so ago, sent a letter to West End Utility requesting that those meetings at least have an audio recording going forward, and they, their board has met, voted on that. They don't have audio equipment or video equipment in their facility, but they don't have a problem with the city if we want to bring a recorder, but we will be responsible for the proper retention of those records, which I know Kirk Reinderson is totally up for, so Mr. Dorsey will be provided with a recorder to take to...
Yes.
To give to Mr. Pleasance, who will then take that to future Sewer Advisory Committee meetings. So just wanted to report on that. Land Use Committee meeting?
So we met on Tuesday, November 7. We talked, we talked about the mixed-use pilot program. We talked about 640 Bay Street and the surplus of that and the RFP. And we also talked about the missing module, if you will, for signage code, which is feather signs, banners, and A-Board signs, which you should see on November 28. We do not have, we do not have a meeting scheduled yet, so that's to be determined for when we meet next. And also, Mr. Mayor, I stood in for Michael Scott at the November 2 Growth Management Policy Board meeting.
Okay.
And I don't have much to report there. There was two city comprehensive plans that were certified, and they reviewed six scoping questions for the Vision 2050 effort that they're starting to kick off.
Okay. Yes.
I would also just like to report on two things. One with KRCC, we had our legislative reception last week, and it was well-attended. I enjoyed it a lot, and our entire group was there, so thank you for participating in that. I also sit on the Puget Sound Regional Coordinating Council's Transportation Policy Board, and we have a subcommittee of that for the Project Selection Task Force for the federal funding competition that will take place in 2018. And at our last meeting last week, the subcommittee received, the Kitsap received a lot of support from our partners in Snohomish and Pierce Counties, and have recommended that Kitsap keep it set aside. We, we, for our county-wide process, we're distributed money through PSRC with a little different formula than the other three counties, King, Pierce, or Snohomish. And again, our partners from Snohomish and Pierce County were very enthusiastically approving that we retain that again for this next competition cycle.
Thank you for that report. Lodging Tax Advisory?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Chimes and lights, you've got to be getting close.
Oh, boy, are we ever. So we are moving forward. First, I'll announce that we are having another meeting next week, Monday, at 3:30 PM here to kind of wrap up the logistics. Most of you probably received notice in your utility bills that we are having this event, and that's December 2. That's almost all day, 11 o'clock to 7:30 PM here in Port Orchard. We want to thank Kitsap Bank for once again sending a sponsorship check to us, and I'll be turning this over to Brandy. The brochure should be arriving any day now, and we're moving forward with all of our ads and our inserts. So put this on your calendar, please, council and mayor. I'd love to see you at the main stage at about 5:00 PM, 2nd. And that's pretty much it, we're moving forward. It'll be a great event.
Wonderful. Thanks for your report. Okay, I did all my damage on the business items, so I'll be brief. Mr. Crocker, our new Finance Director, Noah Crocker, is dragging us out of the 80s, and we will be going to digital signatures on our checks now, and I understand that's an emerging technology.
Can you handle it?
And so our mayor pro temps going forward will not have to come to City Hall to sign checks if I'm absent. And our plan going forward is, there's that book that travels around up here at the dais that'll still need to be signed by the Finance Department, but we're going to send the information that's in that, which is, it's called the Check Register, out to all of the council members on Tuesdays when that's available. Some of you at times request it, but we don't see any reason that we shouldn't share it with all of you, so. And then Noah might send a little memo that comes with it, with some, with the highlights or something to that, so what we've been talking about, so that's to come. The only other thing I have is mark your calendars for April 7. I've been talking to various partners from the Latter Day Saints, the ROTC, and the merchants associations about April 7 as being our community day of service. And so start thinking about what it is we want to do. You know, I think, you know, beauty bark and playground chips are always a hit, and some beach cleanup, but there could be other opportunities, and look for your ideas, so get them to me. We won't belabor it here tonight. That, Mr. Dorsey, do you have a report?
I don't have a report, I just have a statement. I have a revelation. This has been a paradigm evening for me. Sitting next to these hipsters that are changing the world of Port Orchard, I suddenly feel very old and very irrelevant. So I'm going to start taking on past treasure martins role and try to be anecdotal.
Well now.
Good luck. Mr. Crocker, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, nothing further this time.
Mr. Bond?
Well, I think I'm having a good evening. Noah goes and solves your carpal tunnel issues and improves your golf game by giving...
I don't know if he's going to improve my golf game, but...
No, just the open house tomorrow night, I hope to see everybody there if you're able to attend. It is a, it will be a presentation followed by more of a free-flowing type event, and so I would encourage you to get there at 6 o'clock for the presentation.
Ms. Kates?
I have nothing for you this evening.
Deborah Howard, you're here. You have anything to report?
Just that we did bring on our part-time permit clerk, so I think community development is fully staffed at this time. Probably could always use more, but anyways, and then we are going to be bringing on December 11th, a finance accounting assistant, three person, so we've got that person in it.
I think we're approaching being fully staffed.
Say that, but...
I don't know that we ever get there.
I know it. That's it.
Thank you. Kirk Reinderson?
So I just want to remind the council that the open house was noticed, so all the council members and planning commissioners can attend. And then the other thing I wanted to report to the councils that I was fortunate enough to attend training last week on contracts and procurement, and the second half of the training was on the notary republic changes that will take effect July 1 in 2018. And so I'm glad to report that the procurement policies that we, that you guys have implemented in past earlier this year is pretty much right on with the consultant that I listened to. There is some fine tuning that we can do internally with contracts and other internal procedures, but the resolution that was adopted by council is great. And then the notary public, if anybody you know that is a notary public, there is quite a bit of changes that are coming forward, so you may want to have them take some training, so, and that, that's all I have.
Before we have our next citizen comment period, we do have a brief labor session in the back room, and we will not take any action afterwards, so everybody's giving me this hateful look right now.
This is a record holder.
I know, we won't be long, though. So with that, we're to our second citizen comment period. Yes, Ms. Harmon?
Earlier this evening, Nick talked about the Blackjack Creek people, and 60 people turned up at the Planning Commission, and that a lot of people were notified. I find it horrible that you had a Planning Commission meeting and none of us were notified, but the businesses were notified, the developers were notified, the real estate people were notified, but none of us were. I knew when I came down here, because of my past experience here, that over the last 12 or 13 years, that by the time something gets to the hearing process, that nothing is going to change your minds, and I would say probably 99% of the time, that's what's happened. So I didn't expect a change. But what I am upset about is that you talk about transparency, but you're just talking the talk, you're not doing anything about it. And for us not to be even notified that this was on a fast track, and what you're doing is being irresponsible as a committee. Also, two of you mentioned that you had discussed all of this in your committee meetings, but here at this meeting where people watch, other than half of a parking spot, and there's going to be some height increases, none of the information that's in this was presented to the public tonight, because you've discussed it in your committee meetings. Now, not everybody has time to sit and watch the different five or six committee meetings that you're having in their full length of time. And to me, it is you are becoming less and less transparent, and I know that I was classified as the negative force tonight, but I want a city council and a mayor and their committees to be transparent and not speak with what I say is forked tongues. If you are really wanting to be transparent, you make it clear to the people, if not through sending out, at least during this, that what's happening. I wouldn't even have been at the Planning Commission if somebody hadn't put it on Facebook that it was happening. You are not getting it out to the people, and I would lay odds that 99% of the people in this town know nothing about it. Yet people that don't live inside the city limits but have businesses here, they know about it, they're not the ones being taxed on it. And I know it's going to happen. I'm not totally against it, but I am against the process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to comment this evening? Seeing none, our meeting...